Well, welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting, February 19th. This is Tuesday. We're at the Veterans Memorial Building, 6:00 PM, a little after. We had a little late start here, so I apologize for that. We're at 209 Serv Street, so if you're looking for some entertainment, come on down. I'd like to welcome our new member, Susan Stewart. And we have -- welcome to the Commission.
Thank you.
Okay. If you want to speak, yeah. We have -- we're missing Michael Lucas, and so we do have four of the Commissioners here, so we do have a quorum, so I'll call the meeting to order. At this point, could we please have a moment of silence? Okay, thank you. Please rise, face the flag, and begin the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any Planning Commissioner announcements? Okay. Next item up is the nomination and the election of the Chair and Vice Chair. So, this is always an awkward moment. Do we -- let's go for the Chair. Do we have anybody that wishes to nominate or to put themselves forward?
I nominate Jerry Luer.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay. Joseph, do you have any wishes?
No, I certainly agree with the motion and second.
Darn. Okay. Then, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Ken, we'll have a voice call and vote on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes three, three with one abstention.
Okay.
And then, so we need a nomination for the Vice Chair.
I would like to nominate, in absentia, Mr. Lucas.
I'll second that.
Okay. We had comments from him earlier that said that under duress, he would take it, so...
You don't show up, that's what happens.
Yeah, yeah. You get the job. Okay, we'll have a voice vote for that now. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, I didn't hear Michael there, so we've got a pass 4-0.
That's good.
Okay, thank you, guys. At this point, we usually open up for public comment. This is for items that are not on the agenda. So, anybody wishing to come forward, please come forward and state your name, if you Seeing none, I'll close the public comment period. We have no presentations scheduled. Next item is A1 and A2, the consent calendar. Does anybody wish to pull any of the items from the consent calendar? Okay. Can I have a motion? Or do we have any discussion on that, on the consent calendar? Okay. Can I have a motion?
I move that we accept the consent calendar.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes 4-0. Moving on to item number B1. This is a public hearing. It's case number and it's amendment to MAJ 19-001 to CUP 08-94. This is the location at 787 Main Street, Morro Bay, and it's an amendment for a conditional use permit. Do we have a staff report?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
This is an aerial of the site. This is the corner of Morro Bay Boulevard and Main Street, where the Pizza Port is located, and the barber shop is around the corner on Morro Bay Boulevard. And in the red square area is the parking area, the existing parking area for the Pizza Port and the barber shop. Below that is shown as Lot 2, so this request is coming about as a result of the property owners wanting to divide the lots to fix several encroachments. So this is an old 1983 site plan. The building for the Pizza Port business included approval with 16 parking spaces, including one handicapped. And as you can see on this site plan, the yellow line towards the bottom third is the proximate location of the existing lot line, which goes through the Pizza Port building. And it also kind of precludes use of about four to five parking spaces. The whole half-block has been owned by the same family for years, and so for years, this did operate fine. There was no objection because they owned the entire site. In 1994, the Pizza Port wanted to add an outdoor patio, 390 square feet, which was approved with a condition to add two additional parking spaces, or request an administrative variance to eliminate the requirement for additional parking. And so, at this point, I want to back up and say, although the plan included 16 parking spaces, this approval required 14. So the 1983 approval required 14. The 1994 approval added either add two more parking spaces, or request an administrative variance. The administrative variance was supported by the staff report, which said that they had observed the parking lot during business times, and it was rarely even 50 percent full. So they were, they felt comfortable approving a variance if that's what the applicant requested. The applicant actually already had the 16 parking spaces, so they restriped them, and that's how they met that condition from 1994. So now that the owner would like to divide the parcels and correct the lot lines, so you can see here, the green lot line is the proposed new lot line, which moves just to the outside of the utility boxes mounted on the side of the Pizza Port building. So they would like to contain all of the trash in the parking within each parcel, so not have parking for one use spill over into the adjacent lot. And so this is a design where they have shown what would be possible within the green new lot line area, and meet all the requirements for entering parking lots and exiting parking As part of this request, the applicant measured all of the existing customer service spaces in the Pizza Port and the patio, and the actual patio built was 315 square feet, not 390 that was originally approved. The customer-serving area inside the restroom also changed to 662 square feet from the original calculation. This is a chart that shows you the 1994 parking calculations for the new outdoor deck, which was then expected to be 390 square feet, the existing restaurant space and the barber shop, for a total of 16 spaces, and then 2019 parking calculations. The parking formulas haven't changed, but with the new areas, the new outdoor deck is 315, that's actual, and the ordinance allows the first 125 square feet to not require any parking. And what we don't know about 1994 is whether they forgot to do that calculation, or whether there was already existing outdoor dining that used that kind of free 125 square feet. So then, the current day calculation, based on the applicant's calculation of square footage, would be 14 spaces. So their options are to request a reduction of two spaces, because they can fit 12, and the required trash facility within the new lot line area. So they could request a reduction of two. And the findings for this is that the parking lot is rarely more than 50 percent occupied. I did a not-quite-scientific government study, and drove by several times, and photographed and looked at the parking lot, and I rarely saw more than four or five cars. The reduced parking also results in a better design, keeping all of the facilities on-site, and none of them are crowded, and all of them meet the entering and exiting requirements of our current standards. Another option would be to request approval for payment of parking and lieu fees for the two required spaces that can't be provided on the site. And from the staff's observation, again, the parking lot is rarely used. And then additionally, the proposed new zoning ordinance will allow patio dining with no additional parking requirement. So we're in a little bit of an odd position, because we're working under the existing zoning code, but we're well aware of what the changes will be that might be enacted later this year. So the staff is recommending approval of the parking reduction by adopting Resolution 0219. That includes findings and conditions of approval for MAJ 19-001.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any ex parte communication declarations? Okay. Do we have questions for staff?
I have a couple. So, on my horse, on my soapbox, about accessible parking, accessibility, given that we're amending an existing conditional use permit, is it within the purview of this Commission to ask for an accessible path of travel from the accessible parking spot into the existing restaurant?
That's a very good question.
It's a discretionary process, and they're asking for an exception. So the Planning Commission could have deliberations related to that question. Obviously, that would be a significant improvement that would have to be put in place to make that happen, given that there's stairs there now. So you rightfully pointed out that they don't have an accessible way directly from the parking space into the building. We had the conversation internally today at our DRT meeting, actually, about, you know, what could and could not happen there. It was raised by the building inspector. Could we not, you know, require that as a component of this? And we said, "Well, the amount of work that's being done here, normally you would have that 20 percent, you know, trigger, that you have to spend 20 percent of the improvement cost on accessible improvements." But the only improvement they're really making here is they're building a fence around some trashcans. So that 20 percent would be a pretty low figure, and certainly wouldn't get you into the building, because basically they need a ramp, right? So...
Accepts that. You know, the Berry Removal Act of '80 something would require them to perform significant upgrades over a lifespan of a structure, which at this point is probably nearing its expiration. So the 30-year timeline on the Berry Removal Act probably would have necessitated, if I can spit that word out, an accessible entrance by this point, anyway. So I mean, well, that's the end of my question, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, the site's required to be accessible, and it's not currently from the parking lot. I mean, that's the answer, you know, I mean, that's the situation that exists there today.
And realistically, well, I'll save it for comments.
Okay. Joseph, anything? Any questions?
No, no questions.
Susan, any questions? Okay. How does this fit into our parking reduction program for the downtown and the Embarcadero? Where does this fit into that zone on that?
So that's the commentary that Nancy provided, in that one of the reasons we're not sitting here in front of you suggesting that they pay $15,000 and in lieu parking spaces is because the code's going to change, and they'll have compliant parking once it does. Now, that code's not in place, and it's not part of your decision-making process, but there's also a little bit of, hey, let's play fair. And I, I mean, personally, having the conversation with the applicant and going through that process, I didn't seem appropriate. And this seemed, given that it was considered as part of the original permit, meaning to have a parking exception, we felt it reasonable to bring it forward, and not to, what you might normally see is us coming forward and saying, yes, they can pay in lieu fees, $15,000 space, that's what's involved here, but it's all in low likelihood this summer, the city's going to adopt a code that would bring this property into compliance with the parking in, you know, so it didn't seem, again, playing on an even playing field, or playing fair to require that. And so this was another option, because we have the parking exception process built into our code currently, and we know what the policy is that we're proposing to move forward, and it would bring the project into compliance, probably on a couple of different levels, actually, because we have talked about having reduced parking requirements in the downtown, and we do have the increased amount of deck area that you're allowed to have before you trigger parking requirements, which was what would bring it into compliance.
Also, on, from my memory, this was, that corner lot was, used to be a, like a little pocket park, and was accessible. Since then, you know, they've reduced, they've basically pulled everything out, relocated everything to that 300 square feet, and basically scraped it. Where do we have any latitude to see if that could become a public benefit again, as far as public access to that, and, you know, maybe open seating, and to tie this in with a parking exemption?
Certainly not a conversation we had with them. In fact, we had quite the opposite. There were some tables out there that you probably remember seeing, and we said, "Well, if you have those tables out there," and that counts as seating area for the restaurant, then that makes it even worse. We're like, get rid of the tables, because that wasn't what was approved, and they did what they were supposed to, and they moved the tables. They're stacked up in the back in the parking lot area right now. So we kind of made them do the exact opposite of what you were talking about, so that we weren't having that conversation about what is their actual seating area there now, so...
Yeah, because it used to be, that used to be a nice little, nice little area where, you know, people gathered, you know, and even at one point, they had movies out there.
Yep.
You know, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
And it seemed like a, you know, a, you know, a good, you know, enlivening, you know, location for the city, especially on that corner. So I'll address that to the applicant, too.
That would be appropriate.
The other question is, was there any thought given to moving the trash enclosure into that public space, or into that area, and then allowing two parking spaces in front of the trash enclosure? Seeing as the trash, so on the north side, where we have the trash enclosure, basically move it to the east, so that two parking spots could fit there?
There are two compact parking spaces, and they have the trash being wheeled out on the south end into that small space. It's not wide enough for a parking space, I don't think.
Oh, okay.
Well, I guess it would be. There, you could get one more in there.
So what is the structure that squares? Oh, that's the barber shop.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, and actually, even if you change the parking, the southernmost parking on the west side would have exiting problems. So they had to eliminate, because it could not pull out and in two movements, leave the parking structure, parking lot, in a forward direction.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, at this point, I'll open up for public comment. Would the applicant like to step forward?
Good evening, Chair Luer and Commissioners. My name is Kathy Novak, and I'm here representing the project tonight. But first, before I get started, congratulations being Chair again, once again. We appreciate your stepping up the plate. And Michael, in absentia, being Vice Chair. Susan, welcome to the Commission, too. I hope you enjoy your time on the Commission. I really don't have anything to add, because I think staff did a great job in presenting the staff report, but just for a little bit of clarity, Julie did say that that area that you were talking about, the parking pocket park, at one point in time, they had a horseshoe pit there, and there was some things like that, but it was all a part of the Pizza Port restaurant. So, and Scott has mentioned, the biggest concern is if we try to add anything more in that particular area, we're going to be triggering more parking requirements. And we did take out some of the tables and chairs, or benches that were down there, just so that we can manage the parking requirements. Briefly, on the trash enclosure area, we worked closely with staff on that, because we did have some big problems. We can't really push it up toward the Pizza Port building, because there's a slope there, and there would be no way that trashcans would, the big roll-offs would get away from people trying to pull them out of a trash enclosure and roll down, and probably be real dangerous. So we figured that this is the safest spot to put them, in the most level area that can be accessible for the garbage women when they come by, and for the trash and the recycle. I don't really have anything to add. I'd rather just, you know, have you ask questions, and let us answer specific for you, if you've got anything like that. So thank you for your time, and we support what staff has presented.
Great, Kathy. We'll open it up for other public. Would anybody else like to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none. Kathy, would you mind stepping back up? Okay. Susan, do you have any questions for...
I have no questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Joseph?
Neither do I, strangely enough.
Jesse?
I guess while I got you, Kathy, might as well just ask you the question. So how would the applicant feel about being requested a ramp at that rear location?
I think it would be very difficult, because the situation is not only just getting a ramp inside the building, but I think you have to look at the site plan and see where the parking lot area is, and there's a fence around, and there's a big tree, and so it would be problematic trying to get an accessible path into that area, and then up to the restaurant. And I think that the cost involved for trying to do that would be overwhelming, and I think I defer to Scott with his conversation this morning with the building inspector, that if we don't have to do that, it would be just outrageous for us to try to put something like that in.
Okay, fair enough.
Kathy, do you have any, you know, what are the future plans for this, this site and that corner location there?
Currently, there's none. The Pizza Port is leasing the Pizza Port right now. The applicant is in the process of trying to sell the real estate there, and that's part of the lot line adjustment and the parcel map that we're doing through here. So I think it's going to be a little bit more dependent upon, you know, how the real estate transaction works out, and if they sell the property to somebody else, and what actually would be done. And I think, like I say, the biggest concern is, you know, we've got to be careful so we don't trigger something that's going to be, you know, onerous and trying to require more parking or something like that.
So was there any thoughts, you know, of going for a little bit more of an exemption, and including a plan for a little pocket park in there, again, like it used to be, almost for an activity for the town? Is there...
Well, that's kind of...
Thinking a little bit out of the box here and stuff?
Yeah, well, when she's got the tenant leasing that particular area right now, it's kind of difficult for her to try to make some sort of a commitment to you for anything, because she would really need to involve the tenant, and it would also, if she's going to be selling the property, then, you know, we're right at that stage where it would be really tough for us to try to make something, you know, an agreement to you, and then, you know, jeopardize some potential plans in the future. And if somebody wanted to come in and buy it, and, you know, add on, and try to do something different, then we don't want to limit the possibilities for additional commercial area, too.
Okay. Okay, great. Susan?
I will say, we do have, just kitty-corner, Grandma's Yogurt, a full, open patio area that's open to the public. Sometimes people even get their pizza and bring it over there to eat it, because they have things for kids to play with there. So I do think we have that happening in the neighborhood. It's a good model to follow, you know. Future development down the road, they may want to do something like that, but I'm not sure I see that as the biggest need. I did wonder, and this would, I guess, be a question for staff, if there's a concern, which I think is valid, Jesse, for accessibility, is it possible to designate a public parking place on the street that would be closer to one of the ramps that go up on the sidewalk as a handicap accessible space?
No, they're required to provide it on-site.
Okay.
I mean, so right now, Commissioner Brown accurately points out that the site is not ADA compliant, and even the improvement of this parking space, because the ADA parking spaces there now is not compliant either, this is going to be an improvement, but it's still not going to provide you access for folks that are non-ambulatory into the building.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Further questions, further comments?
I'll have some comments.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
I think we'll close public comment at this point, and bring it back to the Commission. Who wants to start?
Well, I actually have two thoughts, one that I thought of some time ago, and one that just occurred to me. With respect to the proposed zoning ordinance, which would just require 12 spaces, you were in the business not of enforcing or applying the proposed zoning ordinance, but what the law actually is, I get that. But it strikes me that the proposed zoning code is really informative of what we would like it to be, and it certainly substantiates the discretion that this board has to use. So I see no difficulty in making the requirement, the 12 zoning spaces. But the issue of a ramp or some sort to make it more disability-compatible, I really sympathize with the notion of not imposing an undue economic burden on the owner at this point. But it occurred to me that splitting the lots in two, and allowing some time in the future for those two lots to easily be sold, will be a significant economic windfall. And there might be, at that future time, the economic burden might be, you know, considerably more bearable and less onerous. So maybe there's something that we could construct, so that should that event occur, if ever, that maybe then we have better access to the restaurant.
I would just note for clarity, that there are already two lots here.
Yeah.
We're doing a lot line adjustment process, because one of the lot lines goes through the building.
Right.
And so encumbers that lot, and makes it more difficult to sell, which is why they're going through, with the Public Works Department, a lot line adjustment process.
You're right. I actually misspoke. The point making, because the encumbrance is, it's straightened out, so that it's now attractive to a prospective buyer, it therefore makes the property much more marketable.
That's good. I just wanted to make sure we were all clear on the record there.
Jesse?
Yeah, so, you know, if anybody watches these meetings regularly, they'll know that I have a very strong affinity for accessible buildings, given the nature of our community. We have a community that's largely... Up there in years? Be careful with my words here.
Wise.
We have a community with special needs. I'll just say that. So I find it very, very much, if we're not able to get accessibility requirements through a permit process, I find it, you know, a very good tool at this point for this Commission to use, you know, this process to require very minimum standards. I don't know, I haven't looked at it too closely, but, you know, in driving by there, it doesn't seem too onerous to replace the stairs with a ramp. That's a relatively easy and inexpensive thing to do, relatively. I say relatively. I mean, obviously, I'm talking about other people's money, so it's easy for me to say that, but insofar as that's a requirement, anyway, by the Americans with Disabilities Act, that barrier removal shall be provided, and that there is not an accessible entrance that's compliant currently, leads me to want to condition this project, or this amendment to a CUP, to ask for that. In addition to that, I think, you know, just driving by, it's not really clear that there's a parking lot in the rear, especially, it's very much not clear that there's an accessible parking spot in the rear. And I think that that should be part of these, part of the condition to this amendment as well, that we condition a sign at the front of, and I hate signs, but a sign at the front of the business, that there is an accessible parking spot in the rear of the business, and a path of travel reasonably to get into the business. I mean, if we can't get people parked and inside, then I think we're not doing our citizens a service.
Susan?
I like signs, and I actually agree. I've lived here since '88, and never used that parking lot in the back, never realized it was there, and never realized it was part of Pizza Port parking. So I think having signage that says, "Parking Pizza Port only," whatever they're going to say, would make sense. I was wondering, looking at the back entrance, which is, I'm assuming... back entrance, which is, I'm assuming where you would want to put that ramp, is that going into a kitchen? Is that even part of the public area of the restaurant?
Believe that goes to the deck and to the back door.
Yeah.
Okay. So does it, would that directly access into a public part of the restaurant, though?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, okay. I've got a little, I'm a little torn on this for my comments. If we're going for future quantification on these, these parking spaces, then we should probably talk about the future requirements that are probably going to come in for parking areas, such as landscaping, screening from the street, you know, planners setbacks and stuff. And we're getting none of that here. We're not getting any landscaping. And quite frankly, to, to follow up with you Susan, I never knew there was parking back there either, you know. So, so we're kind of giving them, I think we're giving them the benefit of the doubt here, which I don't have a problem to do, but we're not getting any of the benefit for the community through this, too, such as, you know, more, more screening, you know, lot, you know, parking cover, lot coverage, shading, all of those requirements, even lighting, even, you know, accessible lighting. I didn't notice if there was any, any lighting in this lot, you know. So I'm a little concerned about that, you know. I would like to make it easy for the, for the applicant, but I think we have, we do have our duty to do here for the community, too. So.
I think, I think you might want to ask the applicant about the access from the back door, because on this plan, it looks like a staff kitchen area. Not to say that they couldn't modify it so that it could be used, but I'm, I'm just not sure that it currently is.
I think I remembered going into the scene here, but we'll open up public comment again, Kathy.
So directly in the back is the kitchen. There is a side door that, if you go through the parking lot, you go through a little gate and then you go up the stairs and there's the outdoor deck and then you go and go on the side door to the, there's about a four or five foot elevation change from the dirt to the side door. So if we're talking about a one and, the two and 12 ramp, we're talking a huge, long ramp. And I, you know, or we start switchbacking. So then we get into a situation where you've got, you know, a huge territory that's covered by an accessible ramp. The way that the parking, the ADA parking space is now, they could safely exit the car, go behind their own car, down the side of where the barbershop is, access the sidewalk, and then go up the sidewalk. So that would be the, probably the best. But other than that, I think that we would be looking at a lot of territory. And I would be concerned, like I said, there's a big tree right there and trying to get around a tree and trying to facilitate some ramp going up to the side door. So, and this parking lot has been there for years and years and years. So when we're looking at some of the older codes where we don't necessarily have the same, we, the codes we have nowadays are a lot more stringent than things. And we're really here just really for this lot line adjustment in the trash enclosure. And so we're trying to be helpful. So I'm trying to see if we can limit the exposure of what we're needing to do for, to put in a trash enclosure. We are screening the trash enclosure, so it's not putting, she's going to build a nice new wood enclosure around it, too.
So Kathy, is, is the present plans to sell off one lot or the other?
Yeah.
You know, with the, with the adjustment or to, are you doing this for refinancing? I know this probably doesn't have direct application to what we're talking about it, but it does. Because I, what I would see is if this gets, if one lot or the other gets sold off, then there's going to be a redevelopment on it fairly surely, anyway. So can, is there any clarification you can give us on that?
She's got them listed for sale, but I don't think there's any real big desire for somebody to come down and bulldoze the Pizza Port and build something new.
Yeah.
Next door, you know, I mean, it's hard to say what's going to go on. It's all going to be dependent on if, if somebody buys it, what they would like to do. But that's going to be a whole separate lot in itself, too. So, you know, she's got a valuable tenant with the Pizza Port there. And from what I understand, you know, he wants to keep the business. So we're just trying to keep it relatively like it is right now and just making this lot line, getting away from the encroachments.
Are there going to be any easements allowed to get to the rear of that property for the adjacent, adjacent lot?
From lot one to, or from the Pizza Port to lot two, no.
Yeah, okay. So that's going to be, the, the rear of that, that lot's going to be landlocked. So if they have parking back there, they're going to have to come off with Main Street. So they're going to reduce parking on Main Street even further. Because you'll have to have a curb cut up there to bring, to develop that second lot.
Just breaking news, I hear that there are conversations about an easement, going from the Pizza Port lot into lot two.
Okay.
I wasn't aware of that, so I apologize. I just got.
Just in.
Just in, right now, fresh.
Okay, Jesse has a.
One more question, in, in, you know, trying to massage this a little bit. Would the applicant be amenable to maybe a CASP report, giving an access overview and maybe some recommendations at the very minimum?
I believe a CASP report is a little bit more formal. I mean, if we're talking about some informal discussions about things, I mean, you know, certainly she can talk to her tenant. But again, we'd have to involve him. And if it, if we start making major changes.
Well, CASP report would just give you recommendations to be compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act as required by the barrier removal statute. And I'm just saying, in, in light of what you're saying, of maybe creating a path of travel that, that goes around, behind the, the accessible parking spot around the, the barbershop there and then to the front door, that doesn't seem like a bad idea. But is that the most, I mean, then you're, then you're dealing with public right of way improvements and maybe you're talking about truncated domes and, and things become a little bit, a little bit weird. But I'm just, I'm saying at the very minimum, maybe just at least report to what the applicant should be thinking about as far as barrier removal in, in a barrier removal plan.
You know, I think if you could leave it as a voluntary thing, I think that would be great. But to condition this project for the, the project that's before you and with the difficulties that we are having, I think it would be, I would just ask that, be respectful that we not go down that path. I think, you know, that it's, she's already tried to do so much to try to get to this point and get things done. And we've tried to work with staff on making sure that we got the, the number of parking spaces we can and the trash enclosure. And there's been a lot, a number of issues. So we just keep adding on to the whole process.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, excuse me, will you be, I'm assuming, sort of improving the pavement, striping, all of that for these parking spaces? Is that?
They're already there. So they might require some new paint for parking, but she's going to be putting a slab down for the trash enclosure. So.
And what do you think about a, a sign just saying Pizza Port parking?
Are we talking about like in the front, just in the front of the window?
Where the, where the entrance to the parking area is.
Do you have a problem with that? I'm hearing no.
Okay.
Just something small. We don't want to make it.
Yeah, because obviously then it becomes almost like nuisance parking because they're not Pizza Port customers. Because look, parking. I mean, I personally feel like almost anything is an improvement. So, you know, I, I feel like if, if you make it obvious this is parking for Pizza Port customers, that relieves some of the street congestion, such as it is, enclosed. Trash cans is going to be beautification, you know. And I, I know, from the little bit I know about accessibility issues, it, it takes a lot of space to put that in. And I, I do think taking out a mature tree or, you know, it's like, we used to call it specific local lousy conditions. It's not the best setup because the parking lot is behind the business, which enters from the front, you know, completely on the other side. But I hesitate to want to make it harder for the applicant to deal with these things in their process of trying to be convenient with this lot line adjustment and sheltering and hiding the trash can facility.
Yeah. It's an old building, you know. And if there was a redevelopment and we were coming in with a new building and things like that, then I would say, you know, all bets are off and it would be a lot easier for us to try to design something and, and, you know, make it function correctly. But, you know, we, we run into this all over Morrel Bay where you've got these old places. And we, you know, we're talking about historic preservation and we're not wanting to rip these places down because they mean something to us. But trying to bring them up to some standards today is, is also very difficult. So, you know, we're okay with a sign if we could, if you added a condition at that so that we could work with staff to bring a proposed, sign proposal to them for their approvals. That'd be, that'd be great.
Okay. Do we have any further specific questions for Kathy? Okay, okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you again, Kathy. We'll close public comment. And let's bring it back up for discussion and, and see where we are with this one.
You know, returning to my idea of sort of deferring this to some time in the future when one or both of those lots are sold. But I really can't think of any acceptable way to condition some sign, some sort of future sale on making this accessible at this time. Am I, am I alone in seeing that difficulty? Is there some easier way?
If you want to condition the project to provide an accessible path of travel, you condition the project to provide a accessible path of travel. You can do that because it's a discretionary permit that's in front of you and they're asking for an exception. So that's where you want to go. Okay. I don't know what's entailed in that because we haven't gone through that analysis with the applicant. Certainly, there's different ways to do it. You can have a ramp. You can have a lift. There's different ways to, to look at it. I, I just don't know what that looks like because we haven't analyzed it. So I don't know what that would mean. Short of that, the, the concept that Commissioner Brown came up with and maybe having them do, put together a CASP report so they do know what's entailed with that, that might be, you know, one thing. I mean, it doesn't get the path of travel put in place, but it also doesn't obligate them to do some hugely expensive improvement that we're not sure the scope of. Because again, they haven't looked at it to this point. I know, I know for this applicant, time is of the essence. We've been working on this application for a very long time and they're very anxious to move forward. So if you want to condition it, add conditions, I don't, I would not suggest like continuing the item and asking them to bring back additional information, things like that, because it seems like, you know, again, time is of the essence. We've been working on this application with them for a while. And because it's involved multiple things and changing ma, you know, maps and lot line adjustments and things. We've gone through all the same conversations you guys are going through this evening. So none of what you bring up is really a surprise. So.
So Scott, let me, let me clarify here. So for, for me, can we condition this for, for staff to, to, what was, what was the process you said?
Well, it's a certified access specialist, a CASP, would give a report to the, the applicant telling them what it would take to become compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act and, you know, the California Building Code. But more than that, it kind of, it outlines maybe a plan on how they could achieve full compliance within a 10-year, a 10-year, you know, incremental process. I mean, I think that's a fair thing to ask of them. It's, it doesn't obligate them to do that in 10 years, but it does, it does spell out not only, not only their obligation under the, the act, but also the possibility that, you know, they could be, you know, exposing themselves to litigation for not performing these types of things. So I feel it's a fair compromise. I, I get what Kathy's saying. It is, it is an onerous thing to maybe kind of just throw it out there and say, do this. And, you know, I don't know if it costs $2,000 or $20,000. And, and that's, that's probably unfair. But I, I think asking for a report, which is only informational and not obligatory, I think that's fair.
Scott, do we have, as a city, do we have any liability on not requiring something to be done for, because of the ADA?
I'm not going to speak to what people will or will not sue on. You know, the, the more the merrier when it comes to litigation. I don't know that we have a whole lot of, you're not required to make the condition of approval for this project. So if that's the question, the answer to the, to that question is no, you're not required to condition them to do this. It is an issue for them and they have liability. Both business owner and the property owner have liability right now because it's not accessible. And as Commissioner Brown pointed out, they're, by now, they're supposed to be. But that's them taking that liability, not the city. It's not our requirement to make them.
Scott, I have a kind of an odd, you know, departure here. We actually, you know, I know we have an expert on ADA requirements in the, in the audience. Would, would you be willing to, Greg, would you be willing to speak to this item for, as far as the cost for, for study? I'll open it up for public comment again, just for an informational.
Well, it's been a while since I've, I'm not a certified CASP.
Okay.
Prior to the development of the CASP certification process, I did do some ADA studies. I don't, I don't know what the CASPs are doing these days in terms of, you know, their, their price structure. So I'd be a little bit, you know, for example, just up the block, the, you know, the art building, you know, I did a, you know, an evaluation for them, for example, and helped them, you know, fine tune. The Art Association, is that?
Yes, that's it.
Right, yes. And, you know, they didn't find my costs onerous at all. You know, so I, I think what you would want to do is sort of, the, the applicant mentioned a certain informality to it. And I would think that if you spelled out some specific objectives that you were going for in that study, rather than a blanket full CASP evaluation, maybe if you were to spell it out as, you know, being specifically oriented towards access between the parking and the building, which is where the, the discussion has focused on.
Yes.
I would think that it would be probably a, in everybody's best, everybody would find it, you know, much less onerous to have that kind of a specificity to it and a very narrow defined scope to get into in order to, you know, accomplish that benefit rather than, you know, because you could turn them loose on the bathrooms and the front door and, you know.
That's a very good point.
Right. So that, that might be something that you might want to consider.
Okay, thanks, Greg. And I'm sorry for putting you on the spot.
Thank you for your input, by the way.
Okay, I, I knew he had some expertise in the area. And I think that's, that's a, you know, a good recommendation. Or, so let's see where, where we are as far as a motion.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
So this is relatively minor improvements they're doing with some exceptions in terms of parking. Is there, and you said something about a 20% of improvement costs, and I'm new at all this. So is, is there a point where you would trigger a look at this? I mean, this feels like such a minor thing they're doing to say, yes, and we're going to throw this whole other thing at you. It is the liability of the owner and the business. And at some level, I'd rather see if they're concerned about them that. And, you know, they should be and probably are, because I, I know at least the owner of Pizza Port is a guy who cares about things like that. So I just wonder if that's for us to put on them?
That's actually a great question. Normally, I wouldn't be telling you, you should be doing this because it's sort of well beyond the scope of the project. But because the project includes the request for a parking exception, you have greater leeway in requiring conditions related to the project. You don't have to grant the exception and they cannot comply. This is what you're putting in place in order to grant the exception. You're allowed, you can do that. If it were just a project in front of you and they were doing something very small, I wouldn't say, yeah, you can condition the project to add some unknown cost to the project that we don't have a scope on. It would be inappropriate to do that if they were doing something very small, like, like adding a trash enclosure and say we were in front of you for that. That's not all that's entailed here. But I mean, if it were, if it were and you were wanting to do this, we would be having a different conversation about that. It's sort of a lax nexus between the two.
Okay. So I'm, I think I'm, where I would like to see this go, and this is just personal, personal comment, is I think I'd like to see a more, you know, a feasibility study for accessible access for, from the part, from the handicap parking space to, to the public, public area of the restaurant. Just, you know, to see, to not require the construction of it, but to see a feasibility of it. And then, but I'm wondering how we trigger that so that it's not, it's not onerous.
I mean, we could condition the project to do that. And it would, and it could evaluate the location of the parking space, the path of travel, and how you get, you know, and how you, and what improvements would be necessary to get you into the building. If that's, if you want to limit the scope, as was suggested, I thought that was actually very nice that he came up there and gave us that input. That was nice. Because it, because a CASP. That was nice because it, because a CASP report on the, on the facility would be every single accessible component would be there and it can get fairly expensive because it's a commercial lot that's fairly large and there are a number of areas on it that also aren't accessible. So, yeah, it could be, it could get kind of expensive.
Because you're going to have to have Hardscape on path of travel, you know, even if it, even if it's a ramp, you know, not either a ramp or actually a, a lift there to get it to the, to the deck. So it would, it seems like it'd be pretty easy to put some numbers on it and then that gives the, the applicant or the, or the, even the, the business owner a choice, information to whether to proceed with it or not. Go ahead, Joseph.
But are you suggesting that after this limited report is done, that the applicant would have to come back to this?
No.
To just be for their consideration?
For their consideration because I think it's, they're, if, they're going to have to consider the, the risk factor involved. And then, you know, so, so it may, that may be enough to, to trigger the improvements.
Well, and I think, yeah, I think that's a perfect, perfect solution in that once we require as the commission, this report of them to get at least entry into the building, at that point, non-compliance or non, non continuation of that, of that thought or of that, of that process would be a known factor that someone could use in a litigation type of, type of situation and it would only encourage the, the full, the accessibility from the parking spot into the building, which I think is crucial. I mean, if we can't get people into our places of business, you know, in a compliant way, I think we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing here, so.
Yeah. Okay.
So, yeah, happy to add a condition related to that if that's the desire of the commission.
Okay. Does somebody want to?
I'll take a stab.
Put some words together on that or?
I'll take a stab at the condition.
Or Scott, do you have something that, or Nancy?
Well, I have two things that I think you wanted to add to this. One would be to add a sign at the front of the Pizza Port, letting people know that there's accessible parking and a rear parking lot for Pizza Port customers. And the second would be the applicant to provide a feasibility study to determine an accessible path of travel from the parking, the handicap parking space in the rear to the restaurant.
Is that good enough for you, Jesse?
I would like to specify that we actually get a CASP.
I think that's appropriate. If we're going to do this, it should be by a certified access specialist.
And a feasibility study might not be the words I would use. I would, I would, I would ask for a CASP determination of access from the accessible parking spot to the entrance of the building, whatever entrance they decide that, that is.
Well, yeah, we want a written report for it, so yes.
And, and what they do with that, that information is, is completely voluntary.
Comfortable with that.
Okay. Okay. I think those are two conditions. Do we have a motion?
I'll move that we accept the amendment to CUP 0894, which is MAJ 19-001, to the 1994 conditional use permit to allow a reduction in parking spaces to 12 from 14, given the other two conditions as described by Ms. Hubbard.
Second?
I will second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Okay. Call the question.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Graffia?
Aye.
Chairperson Lor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you, guys. Okay. Moving on to item number B2. This is case number CUP 18-05, CDP 18-005, and PKG 18-04. The site location is 435 Napa in Morro Bay. Do we, can we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Hello. Thank you very much and good evening, commissioners. I want to start by saying that there is a small error in my staff report, actually. I accidentally switched the square footages for the proposed addition and the proposed ADU.
Excuse me, I hate to throw you off your stride here, but could you pull the mic a little bit closer to you? It's hard, it's hard to hear you on the.
Okay. Is that better? Okay. The correct numbers are 740 square feet for the addition of habitable area to the primary residence and the construction of a 460 square foot accessory dwelling unit. They were switched on the staff report, but those are the correct numbers. So with that said, this project is a request for a coastal development permit and conditional use permit and parking exception approval for an addition to an existing non-conforming single-family residence and construction of an attached accessory dwelling unit. So the property is located in an R2 duplex residential zone outside of the Coastal Commission Appeals jurisdiction, sitting south of South Street, east of Monterey Avenue, west of Shasta Avenue, and north of Olive Street. The 6,336 square foot parcel is surrounded by R2 on all sides. Here is the existing residence as seen from Napa Avenue with the arrow pointing to where the addition and accessory dwelling unit are proposed on the back portion of the lot. The house was built in 1957 with no additions to the structure sense. Today, it sits at 1,318 square foot, feet with a 533 square foot attached garage. The applicant is proposing to add two stories to the back of the existing single-story home. The additions consist of the 740 square feet of habitable area, which will be on both the upper and the lower floors, and the construction of a 460 square foot accessory dwelling unit only on the lower level. So the house is non-conforming with regards to the front setback and the side, south side setback, with the front being roughly 19 feet and 7 inches where 20 feet is the requirement, and the south side being just under the four feet and eight inch setback requirement. The parking is non-conforming due to the substandard garage width, which is the reason the applicant is requesting a parking exception associated with this permit application. So to address these nonconformities, no work is proposed in the required setbacks on any portion of the lot. The wall of the proposed addition steps in to remain conforming. The existing garage is non-conforming at 19 feet and four inches wide where 20 feet is required and the applicant is requesting a parking exception for the garage on the grounds that the cars, two cars can still effectively park inside. And as for parking updates, two California state law mandate that there is no longer a requirement to provide a parking space for the accessory dwelling unit if it is within a half mile of a transit stop, and this one has 1.2 miles to the west. And as mentioned in the previous slide, the applicant is requesting a parking exception for the substandard garage width. So this is an image of the site where you can see the current configuration of the existing home and the attached garage on the lot. And this is the proposed site plan that shows the one-story and two-story additions to the non-conforming single-family home. So this portion here is the two-story portion and the linear portion here is the one-story The second story is actually the master bedroom that you would use stairs to step up into and the bottom floor is the accessory dwelling unit. So this is a photo simulation that shows what the proposed addition would look like from Napa Avenue. And as you can see, the street view impact is minimal. The proposed project is in accordance with the city's residential design guidelines with regards to your relationship to existing homes as no changes are proposed to the overall design of the site. Scale and mass as the addition is on the back 50% of the lot and under the height limit and lot coverage requirements. Surface articulation as there are no changes proposed to the overall design of the home. Building orientation as the entryway to the primary residence is visible from the street and no changes are proposed. Garage and driveway design as no changes are proposed to the garage design. Building materials as the additions are to be consistent with the colors and materials of the garage in the primary residence. And architectural elements as the features will be consistent with the design of the primary residence. So therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission approve the requested coastal development permit, conditional use permit, and parking exception by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 0319, subject to the findings and conditions of approval. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have questions for, for staff?
I seem to recall in the proposed zoning ordinance that some of these very small departures from setbacks that we now consider as non-conforming will actually be handled by the staff and not come?
Yeah, so in the, in the updated draft zoning code, a couple of things will change with regard to these types of applications. When you have the parking exceptions, oftentimes, you know, you see them in front of the Planning Commission for a very small addition to a house. And this one's a little more significant than some of the other ones that you've seen. Some of them, you, you see them and there's a hundred square foot addition. That authority has been pushed back on to the staff level because usually there's very little for the Planning Commission to say about it. And then there's also a change, a proposed change in the zoning code that would allow you to, if you say, if you had a non-conforming side yard setback and it was four feet on the existing house where five was otherwise required, it allows you to maintain that same four-foot setback for any addition that goes along. So it, with limitations, I think the limit is down to three feet, mostly be doing, mostly due to separation issues related to adjacent residences and things like that, but it does allow you some flexibility so you don't have this weird jog in your house that's, you know, a foot wide, six inches wide, eight inches wide, whatever the nonconformity is. And so we've kind of relaxed standards related to those types of things in the draft code. Really, I think common sense changes to the codes that you, that you see other communities adopting.
Okay. Questions, Jesse? Jesse? Any questions? Okay. Okay. At this point, we'll open up for, well, do we have any expertise communication? No. I'd just like to state that I'm an acquaintance with the, with the architect, so that's one of the reasons why I knew he had some expertise in the previous matter, so, but I had, I've had no, no comments, no conversation with him on this, this item here. So, so at that point, at this point, we'll open it up for public comment and would the applicant please like to step forward and explain? State your name.
I'm Greg Barker, the architect for the project. I think I could add a couple of comments to the excellent staff report. One is, interestingly, that we were talking about accessibility in the prior topic and one of the features of this project is to provide accessibility to Mrs. Fletcher's husband, who is a wheelchair user. And so it doesn't, I mean, it shows in the, in the drawings, et cetera, but the, there's a ramp going from the driveway to the front door to provide that level of accessibility. And then one of the bathrooms is being significantly changed to make it accessible as well. So there'll be accessibility in sort of the, you know, the, that bedroom area and the access to the living room, kitchen, dining room, those sorts of areas for one of the applicants. So, and just to spell it out, that intrusion of the structure on the south side boils down to about one and a quarter inches in this particular case. So I guess timing is everything, huh?
Yeah.
And I'm available to answer any other questions that you might have.
Okay, great. Well, we'll call you back up if there's any further questions.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have anybody else that wishes to speak to this item? Okay. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Please, Greg, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I don't mean to make you do aerobics over here. One thing struck me, the, and I'm very much in favor of ADUs, I'm very much in favor of the housing stock and I appreciate your design. It's very, very nice design. One thing struck me, it's, it's a little bit, I don't want to say hidden, but, you know, if we're going to consider the secondary unit a full dwelling unit, you know, second family type of situation, well, that's what this, that's, that's what this would be. I'm wondering if, if the door would make more sense on the other side of this, of the, the living, sleeping area so that, you know, you know, if they had visitors or if they had pizza, if they had an ambulance show up, you know, it's relatively easy to, to find the door to get in. And given that we're, we're doing an ADU, you know, a second dwelling unit, I'm wondering if that's, what do you think?
It, it, it has, the site has some challenges to it. On the, on the plus side of what you're saying, that on that side of the property, the approach is more level. On the other side, even though we're, we're intruding a little bit on the setback, there's actually more usable space, a greater width on the south side of the property to access from. So, and the other thing that I can respond to is obviously, we don't, in, in the long-term future, we don't know who's going to be using it, but the original notion was that the Fletcher's son would be using the dwelling unit and having it facing in towards the pathway to the dining room was considered a, a feature that was desired so that the son could come up and, and join the rest of the family for meals. So whereas putting, you know, the, the entrance to this secondary dwelling unit on the other side would, you know, create the long way around sort of, sort of approach. So, you know, I guess my comments are, you know, just like everything, there's compromises and pros and cons and.
But it is something you considered and you decided effective, this is the best scenario.
Correct. For, for the, the way the owners wanted to use the house.
Thank you.
Okay.
Jesse? You may not be done.
I think it looks like a lovely plan. I appreciate how you made it fit into the neighborhood unobtrusive. I mean, it barely looks like a second story from the street. I did drive by and walk by actually just to case it out. And I like having that secondary unit. Love that it's going to be used by family, at least for now. Think that's the kind of thing we're looking for, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, Scott, while you're up there, Greg, too, do we have to, does he have to have a secondary, a second addressing for the fire? Was that, was that included?
Yeah, so we, we worked that out with the fire department now. We're kind of going on how we want to see these and so they know that there's, you know, whether they wanted us to address them with separate addresses or an A unit, we're addressing them with an A unit now. We've come to that conclusion recently, so that was working it out with fire. So we have that, that's covered.
And this, this property doesn't need to be sprinkled because of the addition?
Yeah, there's not a sprinkler requirement on this. I don't think.
Okay. I didn't.
I was looking at another one the other day. Yeah, I don't think it triggers the requirement.
Okay.
I did notice.
Oh, no, it does. No, there is. It does. This one does. Okay. What's the overall addition?
I'm sorry, I missed that too then. Okay.
And the ADU, so, yeah, it does trigger, so it's over 1,000 square feet. Okay.
Now, is, is it the addition that requires the sprinkler system or is there a retrofit on the existing that's required?
The requirement of the code is once you're adding over the limitation, which is the 1,000 square feet, you have to retrofit the house.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions on this?
Scott, does that mean the house remains 435 and the addition, the ADU is 435A?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I think that's it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring it back to the board. And any discussion?
No.
Nope.
Just, just my, two comments. One, it's, it's related to the first applicant. Again, even though the, the new code is not yet in place, it really does inform what we should be doing in the future and I just think it's substantially, it's our discretion here to say, yes, we can do this. And then, again, I mean, this is for future discussion. The secondary dwelling units require some attention to how we make sure that they stay secondary units and not become short-term vacation rooms, but that's something to address.
I think that's going to be addressed in the, in that, in that code. Jesse, do you have any?
I have a couple of things. I would, I mean, in looking at the plan, it doesn't really, and forgive me for saying so, but it's a beautiful plan and you guys did a great job with it. Start by saying that. It doesn't really strike me as a second dwelling. It strikes me as an addition, guest house type of situation. of an actual kitchen in that ADU rather than an induction cooktop with a single basin sink. I mean, I think we really should be seeing a little bit more counter space there, at least a two basin sink and an actual range type cooktop with an oven. In these ADUs, they are single-family dwellings. We should be treating them as such. A guest house, I'm guessing, wouldn't even have needed to come to us if this had just been a wet bar type situation.
Correct, yeah. We have guest quarters, and they have deed restrictions to go with them. They can't be rented separately, that type of thing. This is an actual ADU.
Right. And I appreciate the, you know, the thought that we want to add an ADU, and I think it's a great idea. I think we really need to add to our housing stock here, and, you know, I'm willing to bite the bullet and take the abuse from the public for the parking problems that these create, but at the same time, I really think we're doing ourselves a disservice if we're not asking for the bare minimums one would expect to see in a dwelling, which would be very clear access. I mean, if I were, I mean, I know you guys own this now, but I mean, at some point you won't. I mean, you know, this structure's probably going to last another significant amount of time that we may or may not be around for. And I'm thinking, you know, if someone's renting this or living in this dwelling, you know, the inconvenience of, you know, having to tell somebody, open the gate, walk around the deck, you know, look to your left, and, you know, on the door that's not, it just seems, it seems like it could be very much more easy to get to and livable. And I think in livability, I'm looking for a little bit more kitchen space. So those are my thoughts.
Okay. Joseph?
You know, that brings up a very good point, because while I'm reluctant to insist on too many details to characterize these accessory dwelling units, if they are generally considered inadequate for independent living, what does that do? That encourages people to sort of hobble together some sort of convenience unknown to the supervising agencies, and, you know, we have poor electrical connections and poor plumbing connections and the like. It really deserves some thought to that.
Okay, but I think we're stuck in the situation where I don't think we have the ability to really, you know, this has adequate kitchen facilities, you know, we can suggest and we can, but I don't think we can require on this at this point.
It means we don't have any code requirements to say they have to have more, I guess, is what I would say.
And I do think down the road, you know, the market will do what the market will do. So there will be some, you know, college students, for example, who are really happy to have basically a studio apartment, they have a little refrigerator, a little stove top, you know, and they're happy with that. They won't be able to charge as much for it as, for a really nice, you know, fuller apartment. So I guess for me, in this case, I would be more likely to say, they're certainly building it to satisfy the needs of their family right now, which I appreciate, it's their property. It will make it down the road if and when it does sell or turn over to another owner. It will be up to that next owner to say, well, this was a good start, but I want to change it to an actual full secondary unit with a real kitchen in it, then we'll see them again here, or somebody will see them again. So for me, you know, I feel like for this project for now, but I'm new at all this.
No, you're...
And I would agree with that to a certain extent, certainly, but again, I can, and this is for a later discussion when we actually address the secondary units, but I can imagine a couple with a little toaster oven and beginning, you know, to make modifications in some way to prepare meals on a regular basis using things that are completely inadequate. Maybe we should just devote some time to what sort of the minimum kitchen facilities to really make it, you know, a second unit.
If I may just...
Go ahead.
So there are standards in efficiency dwelling units in the California residential code, minimum kitchen facilities, minimum cooking facilities, and I don't have them memorized, but if this meets it, it barely meets it. There is a requirement for two small appliance branch circuits in the backsplash of a dwelling unit.
Yeah.
And they'll be required to be compliant.
Right. So, I mean, I just don't see how two circuits serve maybe four feet, not even four feet, it can be four feet, three feet of counter space. I mean, I'm imagining just trying to cook a normal spaghetti dinner there, it doesn't really seem possible. I mean, and I don't mean to disparage, I mean, and this is a full dwelling unit, so this is not a guest house or a half of an addition. This is a dwelling unit that will be expected to house a single family, be it one person or three people or 10 people. I mean, well, 10 people aren't...
You have the opportunity to ask the applicant to come up and speak to the issue, if you'd like.
Okay. We'll open it up for public comment, if you'd like to speak to that.
Yes, one irony of this is that we've been doing some studies of the interiors of the secondary dwelling unit.
Could you raise the microphone a little bit, too?
Sorry. We've been doing some studies of the interior layout of the secondary dwelling unit, and I had prepared a drawing for Mrs. Fletcher that showed a piece of furniture that she plans on having in there as part of the kitchen area, and she, right, you know, but since it was not going to be fixed, I removed it from the set to the planning commission. So she does have plans to have a greater work surface in that area than is provided by the fixed casework in this particular case. So now, in terms of appliances, she doesn't have any immediate plans for more extensive appliances, but she does have a plan for more extensive workspace. And we were working on, you know, making, you know, getting it aligned right so that there was space for that island and the front door still, you know, had a proper approach into the unit without any encumbrances. So that's why we were studying that particular aspect of it, but, you know, that is part of the plan.
How would you get electrical to a non-fixed? So, I mean, there wouldn't be any small appliance branch, there wouldn't be any circuitry in that?
No, no, it would be a work surface. It would not be, have any power going to it.
Right. I just, I'm trying to imagine a Thanksgiving dinner in this area, and I just can't do it. But that's just me.
We should take you out on a boat sometime.
Okay. I have a little, I've got a question for you, too.
Yes.
More for, you know, clarity of access for emergency responders and stuff, to say they roll up here with a 911 call, how are you going to key them to find the secondary unit?
That is a good question. I would think that some kind of signage would be appropriate, particularly around the gate that's going to be the most accessible, you know, route through there. And, you know, you see that at other similar kinds of properties where there's, you know, the 435 and the 435A. That would seem to be the appropriate approach, and it would be completely consistent with, you know, the facade, et cetera, having a secondary address on there. That would seem to make the most sense, having it right over there by the gate. Do you see any...
On the gate.
Yeah, or on the gate, yes.
Yeah. And then maybe, you know, and is that a new, is that new walkway that's going in, you know, that would be a good visual key to something being back there as far as, or is that existing going to the...
Well, you know, there could be, we could develop some of the landing outside the gate, because right now, the approach is really the driveway. And then there's actually some freestanding blocks that have been put in to kind of separate that area out. I don't know, you know, why that was done, but it's, you know, an area that, you know, could use a little landscaping development right in there outside the gate to more visually cue a person into that as an approach. And certainly, that would be appropriate for the, that particular location, given the dwelling unit behind.
I think that's important as you go forward to develop that.
So there's fire condition four, which requires the address numbers, and so how that condition gets implemented in a situation like is designed here is they'll have, they require visible addressing numbers. It gives you the parameters for them and the size that'll be adjacent to where that gate is. And then they'll also, you know, then you have the path that takes you down there, and you'll also have the, at least the letter A adjacent to the unit front door. That's typically how fire would implement and require that to be shown. So it's pretty clear. And I would just think it's covered by the conditions, is what I was pointing at.
Yeah, I think, you know, just not condition it as such, but just to have visual cues of a specific pathway that would lead you to that, I think is really important, especially for when seconds count.
Sure, yes.
So, okay, any further questions for the applicant or comments or... Okay, I think we're... Thank you, thanks again. We'll close public comment. Do we have any more discussion or a motion?
I have some discussion whenever...
Okay.
You know, for me, this, I mean, I'm very sympathetic to the design and to the constraints within. I really wish this ADU was a little bit bigger, and I really wish this ADU, and matter of fact, I was, I was, when I was reading through this, it didn't, everything kind of didn't add up, but now the 460 and the 740, now that kind of all makes sense. 740 seemed right. The 460 seems a little, a little small, but, you know, I really have a problem with that little kitchen unit. Would, if the applicant was amenable to maybe adding an island with an outlet on there with an additional sink, I think I could definitely get on board with this. But as it's drawn, I think it's just a little bit too small to be considered a dwelling unit, for me. That's just my opinion, and that's just where I land.
Okay. Joseph?
Well, I have to admit, I simply, I simply don't know enough at this point as to what's an acceptably small functioning unit and what is, you know, less than that minimum. So, you know, I don't, I don't want to penalize this applicant because of my ignorance.
Okay. Susan, what are your thoughts on this?
I think I'm more with Joe. You know, again, I think somebody who wants a big kitchen and likes to cook is going to look for a place with a big kitchen they can cook in, and so, and down the road, if they wanted those improvements, I would assume they could be made, again, by coming back. So I would be more inclined to approve the project as it is.
I'm recalling now from my experience in the film business and location scouting, and sometimes we were in sketchy neighborhoods, very, very low-income neighborhoods, and even in hotels, you would be very surprised, you would be very surprised at how the renters had implemented things. And so it's not simply a matter of, well, this has inadequate facilities, and so I will look elsewhere. Very often, it's the cost of the rental unit determines, and then certain accommodations and sacrifices are met. That's what I was getting at, why I think it's like the minimum standards have to be.
Well, you know, I would at least like to see a receptacle on the floor, you know, so if there's a movable island there, or if an island gets put in there later, it can just be tied in. So I think, you know, that's an easy fix, and that'll help. And quite frankly, I fixed several Thanksgiving dinners in a three-window school bus, you know, that was on a one-ton chassis, yeah, so they can be done. And I think what we're trying to do, you know, this is going to have to meet code. It's going to have to meet the residential development code. And once again, I think this is the, you know, for me, my point of view is there's, we need to create a range of living, you know, opportunities from 240 square feet houses, you know, or units to 10,000 square feet houses where they're appropriate. You know, this, small is not good, big is not good, appropriate is good. So that's where I stand on this, Jesse, but I see your point.
Sure.
It's a good point. So can we have a motion on this? Does somebody wish to codify this?
Well, I move that we adopt resolution PCO 3-19 with respect to coastal development permit, CDP 18-05, unconditional use permit, CUP 18-05. I think with the addition of having that one outlet in the floor, is that...
You want to condition it as such?
I would. That strikes me as a very good idea.
Okay.
I can go along with that, and I see the applicant nodding, so...
What was it? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Okay, just have a receptacle in the floor, you know, adjacent to where an island would be, or...
Okay.
And they're two-code. Okay, do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion?
Just a little bit of discussion, if I can. And I don't want to say that I don't like the design. I really do like the design, and it's, and from the exterior, it's very, very beautiful. I guess what I'm saying, in the future, as these projects are brought forward, I would hope to see a couple of things. I would hope to see exactly where the refrigerator's going to go, and a little bit more attention to kitchen design and livability in that respect. And I'll get off my soapbox now.
No, that's a valid soapbox. You bought it. Okay, so any further discussion? Okay. We'll call the question.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Barron?
Aye.
Commissioner Ngraffia?
Aye.
Chairperson Laura?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, and then just furthering on that, Scott, you know, they can, we're exceptionally limited as to what we can require on these ADUs, correct?
Yeah, I mean, so the ADU law also has junior accessory dwelling units. They have a maximum size, actually, which is, has the same 50% limitation related to the existing unit, and also has a maximum size of 500 square feet. So, you know, some of these things, you know, depending on what, when you take advantage of, are smaller, and then, I mean, you've seen ones that are much smaller than the 460 here, you've seen them in the 300 range come before you, 300 and something, 60, 70 square feet or whatever, that were even smaller. In those instances, they did have a little bit more of a floor plan on it to show some of the things that you were talking about, though, so I can appreciate that. And then they're all required to meet minimum building code requirements. I mean, that's, they're going to meet that, and I think it's, I think for these types of things, it is, it's, you know, some of it's how they're going to use them.
Mm-hmm.
All right? I mean, in this instance, it sounded like they were going to have family, and they designed it to accommodate that, right? I mean, but maybe if you weren't doing that, and you were going to rent it out, you'd put more amenities because you want to get a little more money in rent. I mean, I think all that goes into, those are the same decisions you and I, any of us would make, depending on what the scenario was for that, and I think that's appropriate, you know, when you're reviewing these types of things. We do have the ability, though, I mean, if you want more, when we jump back into the zoning code update, to put things in the accessory dwelling unit order, it's mostly, we made it consistent with state law, but certainly, there's the ability to add things into it if you want when we come back, so...
You know, I would like to point out that this is state law, but this is a really, relatively new and novel solution for housing. So the state legislature doesn't have all the answers, and they might not have, you know, properly vetted all the long-term consequences of it, so...
I agree that they didn't.
Yeah.
But we are still, we are still required to follow the state law, though, yeah.
No, no, but I mean, but perhaps to flesh it out in some ways.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, and I think your point was better. I mean, and, you know, yeah, the livability, and, you know, if Michael was here, he would have commented on the textures and this, that, and the other, and we appreciate him for that. But, you know, the nuts and bolts of, hey, are we keeping, are people safe, are we able to find them in an emergency, are they being sprinkled properly, and things like that, I think are the most important things, and I... I mean, and, you know, yeah, the livability and, and, you know, if Michael was here, he would have commented on the textures and the, this, that, and the other, and we appreciate him for that. But, you know, the, the nuts and bolts of, hey, are we keeping, are people safe? Are we able to find them in, in an emergency? Are they being sprinkled properly? And things like that, I think are the most important things, and I think our community will appreciate us vetting this out. And, and, you know, if I can get a double basin sink, maybe I'll try, you know?
Okay, great, guys. Okay, new, new business, C1. So we need to appoint a planning commissioner as representative to the Water Reclamation Facility Advisory Committee, WRCAC.
So I have a little bit of a, you know, explanation as to why this is here. Our previous commissioner Sodowsky, who Ms. Stewart has replaced, he was the planning commission's liaison to WRCAC. With him leaving the board, we no longer have that. Commissioner Barone is actually on WRCAC as well, but he is an at-large member at this point, and not the representative from the planning commission. And so what we thought we could do is maybe have someone make a recommendation that Commissioner Barone be the liaison from the planning commission, which would open up the other spot to an at-large person. And Commissioner Barone would just continue doing what he's doing now, but as the liaison to the planning commission, which also brings some additional duties with it, Commissioner Barone. And that would be that when you have WRCAC meetings, if there's anything that's pertinent to this board, you would be reporting back, which is not often what happened, I think, previously, but that was the intent.
Right.
It just wasn't happening. And so I think I would put that out there, so you understand what you're signing up for. It's not just attendance, but it's reporting back to your fellow commissioners.
So we want to have a full skit? Are you, do you wish to continue your liaison?
I do.
Okay, then I will nominate you for the, you know, planning commission liaison to the WRCAC.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
I abstain.
Okay. So, um, so at this point, unfinished business, none? And do we have any planning commissioner comments or future agenda items?
I just got one. I think we all got that email from Brahm Webb, who apparently has been before the commission before, talking about ocean acidification. To Jol, check that out. And, and I talked with Scott about it a little bit earlier. Having been on the G-PAC committee, I know we did quite a lot with environmental issues and, and air quality and water quality and stormwater runoff and all that kind of stuff. So my feeling had been that rather than adding something new into our general plan and opening up a whole other can of worms, that, that as a small community, we were probably on target with doing a lot of what needed to, what, what we could do to keep a clean environment and, and do our own little tiny part with, you know, limiting ocean acidification. And Scott kind of verified that, that it was a more global issue that was being addressed at a statewide and certainly should be addressed at a national level. But I just wanted to kind of put it out there in public, you know, in a televised way that, you know, I think we have looked at that letter that he sent, and, you know, I think we're doing, as a community, what we can to address it. So, I don't know if anybody else had any comments, not, don't want to agendize it personally, but just thought I'd put it out there as a response.
It's appropriate under commissioner comments.
Yeah.
It's something that you received. I did meet with, I have met with Brahm on this issue as well, and suggested that it might be more appropriate, one, to let the legislature kind of get their act together as it relates to this, and provide direction to the various agencies that are looking at it. And if you look at the immaterial that he passed out to you, you'll see what I mean. And then also, I suggested that, you know, we could pick up some of this when we start updating the climate action plan, which is going to start probably next fiscal year. So that would be the time, probably, in a more appropriate location, because I don't have any additional scope or money to add to the general plan.
Well, I think we've, we've addressed quite a few items in the general plan, you know, towards this, in the, in the various modules, you know? So, you know, this is, this is part of the overarching, you know, dilemma that, that we're all facing. So I think it's important, yeah. Any other comments?
I would like to propose a future agenda item to the commission. I have a, I have several soapboxes. One of them is fire sprinklers. Scott and I have had conversations about fire sprinklers, and I would like to see if maybe we could agendize a, a future discussion item at a date to be determined, when maybe Chief Knuckles could, could show up and, and give us some input on what he would like to see, and have the public provide some input into what they may like to see into our secondary dwelling unit ordinance, and especially in respect to ADUs, and how, how these fire sprinklers are going to be implemented, given the, the code change in 2020.
Commissioner Barone did reach out to me earlier today with this item, suggested that it be brought up at this point. It's appropriate for you to agendize it. I need a couple more of you to say yes, agendize it. We don't agendize things that we don't have a majority of the board, or at least three say yes. So if you're interested in that, that's good. It is, it is a, it is something that staff will be working on, and that we had every intent of, our fire department did, of, through local amendment, the local amendment process to the, the new building code, to address fire sprinklers in a more holistic way, and go a little beyond where we were at. They certainly have concerns related to the number of fires that we've had, you know, and realizing that having a little more robust of a fire sprinkler requirement probably could have resolved some of those things, that, and folks actually having fire alarm, or, you know, active ones in their homes, which most of them did not, but yeah.
So Scott, do we know how, what percentage of the community does not have sufficient flow or pressure in, in the public lines to support a, a fire system?
I think you can have them most anywhere. We do have flow issues in some locations, and it, and it is on a case-by-case basis evaluated, because typically, when you're, when you have to put, do fire sprinklers, it, it triggers a requirement for an upgrade in line size. And so there's pressure issues that go along with this, and they evaluate that, depending on where you're located. There are a couple of constrained locations in town that that can be difficult. And sometimes you have to compromise based on the system size and things like that, as it relates to the fire sprinklers, but mostly, it's, you can have them pretty much anywhere.
Well, I know of a couple of locations where fire pumps were required.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so that's one of the things that really, you know, ups the cost of installation of a system.
Mm-hmm.
So I think we need to be cognitively of that.
And I, and like I said, agendizing it, maybe seeing if we couldn't get our, our fire marshal to come, Matt Viera and/or Chief Knuckles, he would probably, he might make Matt come, because he's, Matt's lead on the fire department's component of the update, which we'll be picking up this summer. So they might give you, at least be able to come and speak to, you know, what their ideas were moving forward. We haven't started meeting on this, because we just haven't gotten to that point yet, but we probably will as we get into late spring, early summer. We'll be picking that up and, and moving forward with the update, so.
Well, what I was specifically interested in, I mean, there's an added cost, for sure, and I know the fire department, I mean, they would probably be remiss not to want to encourage fire sprinklers in the, in residences, but I really wanted to hear what the public had to say on the issue. Are they for it, are they against it? I mean, if, if you're building it, you're against it. If you're next door to it, you're for it. So I mean, I really wanted to see, gauge, gauge interest, so.
Yeah. And also, you know, if we do that, I would like to see Public, Public Works, you know, give us a, some, some idea of, of where our, where our supply system is, you know, where, where it is available and where it can readily be, be installed, so.
Would that be appropriate to put out on that new, the, the city opinion poll? What is it, the polling thing that the city, I mean?
Yeah, we do have a new survey tool that we've purchased.
My guess would be we're, we're not going to get a huge crowd out to talk about that until, you know, comes up as something where the city is saying, every household needs to do this, whether or not they're new, old, pulling a permit, hiding quietly in their backyard, you know? You know, then, if you say this is going to be a part of what the whole town's requiring, you're going to get them out, but if it's something that's just triggered by new building?
I, I think the thought would be, in any kind of an ordinance, is that by attrition, you know, 20, 30, 40 years down the road, you know, through the permitting process, that we gain a, a, a stock of housing that's mostly sprinkled? And, you know, given response times, and I know the chief obviously would like to reduce his response times wherever he can, and, you know, saving lives is going to be the ultimate goal there, so I mean, and I throw this statistic out every day, so forgive me, but there hasn't been a fatality, there wasn't a fatality in a sprinkled residence in the last three years in California where the sprinkler system was active, so. That's a, that's an easy, it's an easy sell for most people, so.
So, so I mean, how that would probably look is, you know, I'll, I'll put it on my future agenda item board in my office. I'll, I'll speak with the fire department, and I think the first step in that is just to have them come and sit down and talk with us, and, you know, give you a little idea about where they want to go. You can provide input at that point, and then we can, we can see what the next step might be, right? That might be putting a poll together and putting it out there, or that type of thing. Because I would imagine, I think I agree with Commissioner Stewart, I don't think we're going to get a whole lot of people show up for it. But if we do the poll thing, that will engage the community, so that might be, you know, one way to go about it. So I think initially, have the conversation with the fire department, maybe Public Works, and, and then move it to the next step. So if we did that in the next couple of months, that would line up right perfectly for the process that we're going to start going through on the code update, so I'd be happy to do that.
So could we bring them in? Somebody from the fire department?
I'm going to have them come to the meeting.
As a presentation?
Yes.
Start of a meeting? I, I mean, I think that would be good.
So, so we would deal with it in a presentation basis?
I could put it as a, as a business item on the agenda, so you can, you know, have a full conversation about it. Presentations are, are allowed, are typically, you use those for limited conversations. I think a business item is, is a full-blown discussion. So, and I think you might want to have that. And I would put it on an agenda where we weren't full. It was going to be a long one, at least my thought process moving into it. And so we could have a little bit of time to sit down and talk to you about it, and yeah.
And this wouldn't be onerous to the staff time?
Yeah, I, I mean, that's, it, the timing is appropriate, because we're going, we're going to go through the code cycle update, and we were literally going to be doing this anyway. I mean, I've been talking with Matt about it a little bit. I don't have a lot of specifics from him, I just, you know, there's a, there's a significant interest on the part of fire to, to redo our, our sprinkler requirements.
Okay. How many, how many yeas, how many people?
I'd be for it.
Yes. Okay.
All right. All right, I will, I will make it so.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, now, community development director's comments.
I'm good.
Anything else?
I don't really have anything else for you.
Okay. So, Scott, I probably should have mentioned, so just, you know, more of a question than anything else is, you know, where do we, we've talked about it several times, and we tried to find a nexus for it, but have we had any progress on an EV charging station down on the Embarcadero? You know?
I know, I know it's been a desire in the past of Public Works, and we've had conversations about it, and I brought it up to them again, but it's kind of not on their radar from a work plan standpoint, which is one of the reasons I have a future agenda item to bring back planning commission goals for the next goal-setting process that we're going to start coming for the next fiscal year. And I think I have it, I think I have that teed up for the next planning commission meeting, actually. So that'll be a business item on there for, for us to discuss, and so we could probably put something like that on there, and at least we could get a, you know, a memo coming out of the planning commission for desires, for consideration in the upcoming goal-setting process. I'll also give you all the things we're required to do for the next thing, which is, which is another one of the issues. We have to, we're, we're going to start, we're going to finish the general plan, excuse me, and zoning code, and then, and then we're going to start the housing element update, and the climate, and our climate adaptation plan, our cap, needs to be, we need to start updating that, because that's at the end of its, its life as well. So we have a lot of initiatives to move forward, but, but that's certainly, we, one that we could give some more consideration to.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, if I can ask one more question, and this is definitely more of a, a city council thing, but just because I've gotten a million questions about this, farmers market, is there a plan to, to have that reheard at the council in a, in a?
Commissioner Barone, that's a very good question. So where are we at with that? So as you may have heard at the last council meeting, maybe one before that, the chamber's no longer going to be administering to the farmers market in the downtown. So, and so what are they going to do, though? They still have the CUP for that, and they asked if I would be willing to transfer to another entity. There are three entities that are interested in it, and so they're going to do an RFP process just to get proposals on operators, and then the chamber board will pick one to transfer the license to, at which point we would be transferring it to that entity, and we'll see how they operate. It's a CUP, so if there's problems with it, they're not operating it well, well, then it gets re-reviewed and brought back to this board. You won't be the decision-making process as we transfer it, but if there are issues related to its continued operation, then potentially, you could see it again, or see it.
And so potentially, we would be performing in the same location?
So that's the desired intent, to have it in the same location. There are some folks out there, businesses, that don't like it where it was at, when it stopped. And so I've talked to the, at least two of the three interested parties, and they are poten, excuse me, they are interested in trying to sit down with those folks that are unhappy, those business owners that are unhappy, and possibly tweaking it a bit. I also suggested that I'd be happy to sit down with whoever's chosen, and with our fire department, because that was the larger issue, is why it wasn't going to work on that stretch of Main, because we couldn't get fire access down the street with them on both sides. It was never supposed to have them on both sides. And we'd move it forward like that. So if that happened, then we might have a modification that changes the location. We've done a couple of minor mods, staff level, to reconfigure it. But again, we have a couple of players out there that are still unhappy. I don't know that you can ever appease every, everyone, right? You're always going to have somebody that's unhappy. We just try to get as few of those as possible, so.
But it seems like if we could keep Main Street open and have, have it on the east-west streets, it seemed like it'd be, that makes a lot more sense to.
The comments I've gotten are the Embarcadero seems like the, the logical place for it, but that's, that's just, you know, the, that's just conjecture.
Folks in our downtown wanted to stay in the downtown.
Historically, the reason for putting it up there was to drive business traffic, people up to that part of town. Maybe that'll happen when the signs go in, but, you know, it, it does help to have an event, or a little happening for a few hours every week.
You know, the.
So, yeah, I don't, and, and I, it was on the Embarcadero many, many, many years ago, and they were not happy with it.
Yeah.
Because it was basically selling things that they felt, and blocking traffic and parking, you know, the usual litany of stuff.
And the other thing, too, was it was supposed to be a draw to link the Embarcadero to the downtown.
Yes.
So having it on that east-west street, you know, the east-west portions of the street would help tie that in with the Centennial Stairway, you know, and bring people up from the Embarcadero.
There were a lot of concerns with, especially hotel businesses as you head towards the Embarcadero, so, you know, passing Main Street and going down towards Market, there were a lot of access issues with those folks, because, believe me, all of the various permutations of where it could be, you know, on both sides of Main Street, turning the corner on Morro Bay Boulevard, going down the Boulevard for several blocks, which, you know, again, it does make great sense. It should be part of that whole economic development revitalization plan to make that connection, but every step of the way, there's somebody who's cranky.
We're hearing input, as you probably were, from all, all corners of the city, about why we stopped it.
Has, has anyone sought to seek out the Bank of America, whoever owns the Bank of America property, if that's possible?
Yeah, that's, that's actually was approached at one point. They do still own that property. At the time, when they were there, they did not want the liability of having the market in there, so they, they said no. So, yeah, lots and lots of places, actually, had been looked at through the years.
Seen several different maps for different locations and permutations of, you know, options for it, so, yeah.
I kind of knew the answer, but I thought the public might want it.
That's why, so it was a great question. There is a lot of interest. I've gotten a bunch of phone calls asking me why I shut them down. Me.
You didn't do it. Scott did not do it.
Yeah, it wasn't me.
Wasn't his fault.
So, this is a facetious question, but what does the Chamber of Commerce do anymore?
They're representative of the business community. They advocate for them. You know, they're offering trainings right now for all of them, business training opportunities. They're helping to implement the Economic Development Strategic Plan. They're partnered with the city to do that. Been going around and meeting with everybody. They're helping with the wayfinding project. I think they just had a workshop on bookkeeping. I think they had a previous one on how to write a business plan.
There's a meeting coming up Thursday, 5:30, 5:30, or 5:00, at the Inn at Morro Bay...
Yep, I will be there.
Yeah, do it.
It's...
It's the Government Relations Committee, so there's actually a group, and I happen to be on it, you know, working, the business government...
It starts at 5:00, it looks like.
Five, business-government relations and how to improve that, what kinds of things businesses are concerned about in terms of our local government.
It's also to help with, it kind of dovetails into the goal-setting process for the council. It's going to get some input from that. I think I'm manning a table.
Yeah, they're pretty active. I think what they felt in this situation was they were really, as an organization that was supposed to represent business interests, they were really getting caught in the middle of businesses who liked it and wanted the market, and a few businesses who were very, very vocal against it, and didn't want to be in that position of creating perceived problem.
They used to be farmers market, they used to be the Harbor Festival, they used to be the fireworks, you know, there used to be, you know, they used to be, they used to be. And they've eliminated all those functions.
I think they decided not to be an event organization, but more of a business advocacy group.
That seems to be where their focus now, because they have a limited budget and, you know, limited reach. One of the biggest things that, you know, once Executive Director Erica Crawford got here, and it mirrors my experience with the business community, is when you broach the subject about, hey, what's your five-year plan? They didn't have one. And so you're kind of like, really? Well, I mean, what if you, what if you made just that, just a little bit more money? What's your next step? What's the next improvement to your business you're making? What's the next, you know, fruit product? I mean, and there was, I mean, a lot of times, it was kind of like, well, they didn't have a plan for that. They weren't thinking in those terms. And so the chambers recognized that in seeking training opportunities for, that make it available to the members, to help them out with things like that, because not having a business plan, you know, I mean, that's typically things that you do when you have a business, you have at least a five-year plan, it kind of tells you what you're doing. Even if it's a sketch in the form of an outline, you want to have something that kind of tells you what that next step might be if the economy were really good. And if you don't have that, then you're not really doing anything with that, you're sort of treading water, so.
Okay, I think we've, I think it's time to go home. So at this point, we'll adjourn to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting at the Veterans Memorial Building, 209 Surf Street, on March 5, 2019, at 6:00 PM. And thanks for everybody.